Ready? Great, good evening, everyone. The time is 7:02 PM. And I will now call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. The next item is acceptance of tonight's agenda. I do have one change. We're not going to have a monthly budget report this evening. With the holidays, a lot of our journal entries have not been made yet. So I told Tom he could take the night off and we'll have our monthly budget report again in February. So I do know everything is looking good. Healthy balances are all around. So that is good, but we will have that next month. So I do have a change. Instead of the monthly budget report, I think what we'll do for item seven is we'll continue our conversation on Engine Three. And everything else is the same for the agenda. So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you both. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Now, let me just make sure. We do have two of our selectmen are joining us remotely this evening. Jim and Sean, are you there? Can you hear us? Can we get them on the screen so we can see both of them? Oh, and actually, Selectman Hernandez is online as well.
Good evening.
Hi, Jim. Hope you're feeling all right over there.
Yeah, thank you. I just don't want to take a charred risk at sharing with you all.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Just to confirm your, an aye on the approval of the agenda?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And then, we can just move on for now. I don't know if Sean and Mike can hear us, so maybe two abstentions on that unless they can confirm. So we'll move on to approval of the minutes from our regular meeting on December 20th, 2023. Has everyone been able to review those minutes?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Great. Any errors, changes, or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great.
I just want to give kudos to Sharon. That was a crazy minutes last week. You did an amazing job.
Did a good job, Sharon.
It's a lengthy. Sean says he can hear us, but he can't unmute.
Okay. Can you unmute Sean? Are you able to let Sean on here right now? He's Manning SP 67? Sorry. And then Julio's Hot Spot Two is, okay.
I didn't know who Sean was.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. Thank you. Perfect. All right. So next up on tonight's agenda, under Communications and Correspondence, we have a special guest with us this evening. And I'd like to invite Rob Pueta up. Rob is our newly elected and sworn in Fire Chief as of January 1, 2024. And yeah, just come up. I wanted to invite, Rob is here with his family. And I wanted to invite him this evening, one, to introduce himself. Rob is no stranger. He was previously Deputy Fire Chief for many years. Four years. Four years. Rob also works for the town of Portland as well. He's a Portland resident. And so we're thrilled to have him. We know he's got big shoes to fill, but we know he's going to do an awesome job. So I just wanted to welcome Rob and see if any of the selectmen had any questions or just wanted to say hi.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, thank you.
Congratulations, Rob.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Rob. Welcome aboard.
Thanks. And so Rob is already getting started with a lot of activity. And unfortunately, as we talked about at our December 20th meeting, our fire engine number three out on Cox Road, right? Not Cox Road, Gray Hill, Gray Hill, is, has been past the point of return as far as service goes and is currently unusable. And Rob, along with former Chief Shea, had some news to share as far as a potential, I guess, backup system that we can maybe use in the interim. And so I don't know if you wanted to go into what we've been working on and all that.
So Engine Three, out in the country we call it, had a catastrophic failure to its water tank, which is quite essential to a fire truck to be able to carry the water around town. And the repairs, obviously, you know, as the board is aware, are well over the expense that we're able to pay and fund for a truck that's, you know, 30 years old. So we've been exploring different avenues, trying to see what we can do in the meantime. We have our neighbors in East Hampton, who we actually responded to a house fire a couple of weeks ago to assist them with manpower and fire extinguishment, actually. And as we were standing there talking with the chief, he came over and said that he understood that we had some trouble with one of our engines and it was critical that, you know, we have that out in the country. So we have an engine and a tanker out there. The tanker was actually pulled offline for mutual aid calls so that we could protect our own town. In the event we had an emergency out in the country, we needed to be able to respond with something in the area. So the tanker was pulled off of our mutual aid assistance program. So it was kept in town to assist our community, which is great. East Hampton Fire Chief was kind enough to tell us that he has two spare fire trucks in East Hampton and offered one of them to us as a loner. And so we said, well, we thank you very much. The issue we have is Company Three Fire Station is very small compared to a normal fire station and that just a regular fire truck wouldn't actually fit in the station. It has to be pretty much a custom size. And he said, hey, not to worry. We'll take some measurements, but this is the smallest fire truck that we have. So we'll go from there. And they were able to take a few preliminary measurements. And we said it was very, very tight, very close. And they were able to drive the fire truck over to the Station Three to do a dry fit. With some finagling, we moved a couple of things around on the fire truck. The ladders stick out, so we were able to kind of move those in a way that would be safe, yet accommodating to fit. And with a few inches to spare, we found that the truck does fit in the station. So where are we at? With the help of Ryan and the Town Manager of East Hampton, we're working on a process where we'll be able to acquire that as a loner truck in the meantime while we're in the process of figuring out how we're going to proceed with Engine Three's replacement. So that will allow us to put our tanker back on our mutual aid assignments, which will assist the town of East Hampton, which is going to be helping us. So one hand washes the other and we'll be able to allow our tanker to continue to travel to other towns. Since our tanker was pulled offline, I think there's been about four mutual aid calls that it would have gone on, that it didn't, that we had, you know, reserved it for our town. So that will allow us to return back to our neighboring communities and, more importantly, provide us with a fire engine in the country that will have all the necessary equipment for rescuing someone from a house with ladders. It will have hoses, extrication tools, EMS equipment, everything that we need for a fire engine. So that's the avenue that we're exploring. We should have further details in actually this week to finalize hopefully in the very near future. So that's where we're at with the loner.
Thank you, Rob. Yeah, no, this is exciting because, as you know, as you know, our new chief was saying, we don't currently have an engine now in the countryside and that's not good. We all know that we need to get that back in action as quickly as possible. So we have a temporary solution that I just want to give thanks to the Town of East Hampton for working with the Town of Portland on this, to their Fire Chief, to their Town Manager. And we're still, this is a moving, this is, you know, very much in flux currently. We're still fine tuning the details, but we should have that very soon. But I thought it was important, since, you know, Rob was going to be coming here already this evening, to brief this board about what we're doing in the meantime while we were to figure out how we're going to fund and procure a new fire engine for Company Three. So this is, it's good news. It's a win-win all around. And I want to thank you, Rob, and certainly Former Chief Shea for your work with this and looking forward to, you know, working with the Town of East Hampton and getting this back in action.
Yeah, no problem.
Does anybody have any questions on any of this?
So the only question is, does this buy us a couple of months or does it buy us maybe even longer up to a year?
So we're getting a draft, the Town of East Hampton, the Town Manager's writing up a draft, kind of something that we can go off of, maybe very temporary right now. The stipulation is, obviously, if something happens to one of their fire engines, we would have to, in turn, return it to them so that they can continue to operate. But we're looking at somewhere's around a three-month grace period right now that, you know, we could reevaluate at that point where we're at as far as our replacement.
That's fantastic.
So they're willing to work with us on whatever they can to help us out because essentially it will help them as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Great. I don't have, I mean, I just want to say again, welcome, Rob. I'm looking forward, I've been working with you for many years and I'm looking forward to working with you in your new role and capacity. I did, I just would say, if you wouldn't mind, you might want to stick around just, just for a couple more minutes because I think we're going to be talking about the conversation on Fire Engine Number Three
Okay.
right after our public comment.
Sure.
So just in case we have any questions, but certainly welcome. Thank you, thank you to your wife and father for attending as well and looking forward to this new, this new role for you.
Right, thank you. If you don't mind, I just want to kind of give, you know, you guys an opportunity to understand who I am just a little bit better.
Sure, absolutely.
So I joined Portland Fire Department, I think around 14 years ago and didn't know anything about the fire service. I had multiple friends and colleagues that were firefighters around the state and I always thought it was a neat thing. And it wasn't until my stepdaughter was doing cheerleading at Agalati Field one night and I saw the firemen, you know, running around the firehouse in gear and doing something crazy. And my wife elbowed me, she goes, why don't you go over there and see what it's all about? I said, really? She says, yeah, why don't you take a look? So I walked over there. I talked to some of the firemen that were there and they were explaining to me how they were doing a drill and practicing and I was just intrigued. And I said, wow, and this is volunteer? She said, yeah. I said, well, what do you have to do to become a member? They said, you're interested? I said, sure, come, come, follow us. And so that's where it all started. And, you know, through the last 14 years, I've done all the trainings that I could as far as firefighting skills and emergency medical technician to be able to help the community here. I've advanced through all the ranks, you know, up to where I am now. It's been something that I've enjoyed doing. You know, I love giving back to the community. I work for the town, as Ryan said. I'm in the Building Maintenance Division for the Town of Portland. And before I joined the Town as an employee, that was always my hobby. You know, nights and weekends were where I got to play. You know, as soon as a pager went off when I got home from work, I was running out to whatever emergency happened. And so it's, it's been an amazing opportunity, I should say, to be able to be a part of it. It just goes to show, you know, you don't have to have experience to be able to join the volunteer fire department. You know, all the training and everything was put on by the Fire Department and I was able to take full advantage of that. And it's kind of led me to where I am today. So just wanted to give you guys a little bit of a background on myself, so.
Thank you, Rob. It's important to touch on that. As you mentioned, it's a group of volunteers and we're very, very blessed to have them in the town and glad that you're a part of it. And I hope if anyone's watching that's interested may consider, you know, a second career as a volunteer firefighter in Portland. Please reach out to our new chief. So thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect. Great, with that, we'll move on to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to comment? I think we have someone in the chat? Is that Elwin, I think?
Yeah?
Hi, Elwin.
Good evening, gentlemen. I have an open question before I make my comment. Am I correct in assuming that you have not fully negotiated the tax abatement on Brainerd Place?
Yeah, Elwin, public comment is not really a back and forth, but that is.
That's correct.
I was, I've made public comment before on that matter and I was pleased to see that in your last negotiations, you included stipulations that secretaries of interior standards must be met in the restoration of the three-story structure. Tonight, I'm suggesting that in your early negotiations, assuming that those are still ongoing, that you consider requiring that at least 50% of Phase Three be completed as a necessary component of the tax abatement agreement. As you know, that the entire project was meant to be a mixed-use development and without Phase Three, there was very little mixed use that would be forthcoming. So I'm suggesting to the selectmen that in your thinking and in your considerations, that you look toward at least a 50% completion of Phase Three as a component of that agreement. With that, I'd like to thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, thank you, Elwin. And yes, those, those negotiations remain ongoing. Thank you. So there'll be more to come on that. Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to comment, either in person or in the chat? There's also a second public comment later on in the meeting if anyone changes their mind. So seeing none, we'll move on to item seven on the agenda, which is a continuation of the conversation on the replacement of Fire Engine Number Three. And I wanted to, the reason why I was a little late to the meeting this evening was I was working with our Finance Director, Tom Robinson, on a, on a draft resolution that I don't know if it's ready for primetime to share with everyone this evening. But we believe that we do have the funds necessary, potentially, to procure a fire truck if this board so chose. The cost, Former Chief Shea has estimated with contingency to be up to $525,000 for the replacement of Engine Three. The reason why I added this to tonight's agenda and didn't wait for a later date is because I wanted to continue this conversation now as these trucks have proven to go off the lots very quickly. And what started, I believe, as eight, and forgive me if I'm wrong, seven trucks, fire engines, just a few weeks ago, are now down to four. And so there's only four left. And, you know, we have procurement processes that we need to follow as a town. And if we want to do this in a timely manner, we're going to have to schedule a public hearing. We're going to have to schedule a special town meeting. And a public hearing has to be posted seven days in advance in a local newspaper. And a special town meeting has to be posted five days in advance. So we can do both simultaneously. But say, for instance, that we wanted to get this done this month, for instance. And let me just pull out a calendar. So our next Board of Selectmen meeting is January 17. And at that meeting, we have, and we'll talk about it a little later tonight, but we do have a presentation by Great Blue on the School Facilities Survey, already scheduled at 6:30, that is planning to be a special joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and Board of Education. So it kind of limits our time. So I wanted to just talk about the process. And so just to, just to circle back to the beginning, Bob was telling me that if we were to move forward and secure a fire engine, this is just the chassis is what's available now and it still has to get outfitted. And that would not be done until most likely June. So although we have this temporary fix courtesy of the Town of East Hampton to get us to June, we still don't really have a plan, a long-term plan for a replacement of the fire engine. So I've been working with our Finance Director on potential revenue sources that we could use to come up with that $525,000 purchase. Now, this is a very large purchase that we did not budget for, we did not anticipate it. We knew that we, as I'm sure Rob will tell you, we knew that the replacement of Engine Three was coming, but we did not expect it to be so badly damaged beyond repair. And as you may recall, the cost is estimated to repair Engine Three of up to $250,000. So this is a 30-year-old fire engine. And so I don't believe anyone on this board believes it's in the best interest of the town to spend $250,000 of taxpayer funds on a 30-year-old fire truck when we could purchase a brand-new one for about $525,000. So I wanted to, one, bring all of this information to the board again to see where this board's thoughts were on this process. Do you agree that we should move in the month of January? Because if we do, we would most likely need to have a special Board of Selectmen meeting, most likely next week, one night next week, with the sole purpose of scheduling a public hearing and special town meeting on the resolution that we drafted. And I'll share, I did print out copies if any of the selectmen would like to see this resolution. I literally just was writing this with Tom.
Still warm.
It's, it's still warm. But you can see, I'm sorry for Jim and Sean who are virtual now, but this is essentially where the funds would come from. We have some excess revenues this year that we're fortunate to have. We have received through the state of Connecticut a municipal revenue sharing grant that we had not anticipated or budgeted for in the amount of $237,112, as well as, because of the rising interest rates, our interest income has significantly risen for budgeting purposes, which has been a blessing for the town. So we have an increase in our interest income right now. And that is, let me get you the number, 237, $157,888 of additional interest income that was not budgeted in our, in our budget. So that is available. And the remaining $157,888 would need to come from our general fund, fund balance, which we do have and is available for use. So those are the three revenue sources that I am proposing be used to come up with this $525,000. I don't like doing these types of things during this time of year, you know, and I don't take, you know, spending any funds that we haven't budgeted for lightly. But given the importance of this, you know, for our, for our fire department and protecting the town, I do feel as though we have the means and the capacity to act if this board wanted to and do it in a financially responsible way. So I wanted to bring this to your attention and I'll just open it up to discussion and see what your thoughts were.
Ryan, yeah, I'm all for replacing the engine because it desperately needs it and with the age and the, and the amount of repairs it needs, it doesn't make sense to invest any money into that engine. But I just wanted to ask, at the next, at the last meeting in December, you had said you were, you were going to present to us several options. This is option A. Is there option B or C?
Currently, this is, currently, this is the option that Bob had presented to us. We had hired a.
I meant, I guess, I meant options of how to finance this.
Oh, on how to, on how to finance this?
Yes.
Yeah, we, Tom and I talked about financing options. We, you know, we discussed potentially bonding or leasing the purchase of the fire engine. However, we kind of ruled out each one and we, I mean, we could go down that road if you wanted to talk about bonding or leasing. It's just, as, as the interest rates on our interest income have risen, you know, the interest rates that you would get on a lease and a bond have also risen. So it's, it's almost kind of cost prohibitive. I personally, we, you know, after talking, it made more sense to purchase the fire engine outright rather than incur more interest charges and fees through that. So if, if that's a, if that's an avenue that you'd like to explore, I guess we can, you know, go down that more. But I, I know Tom and I did work on this quite a bit. We discussed this with our town auditor as well. We ran this by him this afternoon, actually. And this was a viable option that the auditor said that, you know, we could do. And I will say, we just had our audit report come back. It'll be shared with the board at our upcoming meeting. It was very favorable and so that's good news. We had a clean audit, so, well, I guess I'm getting ahead of myself. But we talked to our auditor and he said this was a viable option and, you know, that we could do this with, with no impact, you know, to our, to our standing.
But Ryan, a question that I would have is, do we have, with the audit completed, do we have a sense of how the 2022, 2023 budget, how that finished? Are we going to have a surplus? Do we have money that we're going to be going into the fund balance?
Yes.
That would actually offset what we would have to take out in this case?
Yes, 100%. Yeah, we have a very healthy, we had a very healthy surplus. I don't have the audit report in front of me, but I can tell you it was a very healthy number that went into our fund balance from last year. We did, we did quite well. So we do, we do have the funds available. And we also, like I said, had unanticipated additional revenues in our current fiscal year that we're also proposing to use to help offset that. So we don't want to dip too much into the fund balance, which is why the amount requested currently is $157,888 that would be coming from our fund balance. And I can assure you that our audit, we had much more than that go into the fund balance in our previous year. Good question.
So we would be preserved and I know that we put some policies in place to help with our bond rating, et cetera. We would actually be preserving, our fund balance would still be remaining very strong in that case?
Correct, yes. And I'll have, I can have that information. And this was a little bit, you know, rushed today as we worked on this because of the time-sensitive nature on this. So if, if, I wanted to see where the consensus from the board was before moving, you know, moving forward. And as I mentioned, we would have to have a meeting, most likely next week, a special Board of Selectmen meeting where I can have all that information available. So that will all become public as well as we move through this process. I just wanted, the point of tonight was to share this information and see if the board agreed and wanted to continue exploring this avenue or if we, you know, could look at other alternatives. But I just don't have another option at this point in time.
So, Chief Pueta, East Hampton has a truck we could use and we have a couple of months to, oh, yeah. That might be worth exploring. If, I don't know if the truck, a fire truck would be adequate for our needs? If it'd be worth discussing with them, whether they'd be willing to sell it to us or, or do a transaction with us? I don't know how good that truck is, but would that be an option worth pursuing from your point of view?
No, that's not something, that's a 1994.
So it's still an old one?
Yeah. And it barely fits. This is just an emergency situation that it's under shelter, so we would be able to, you can't even walk around the front of it because it's so tight. So we'd have to walk around the back. So as far as purchasing that particular truck, that wouldn't be an option.
Easy one, thank you.
No problem.
Ryan, I think we, I think your idea is good to move. This is a life safety issue, really. And we saw with the purchase of the last fire truck, how quickly these things come and go and how quickly the price increases. And this is, this is going to go to, to the town, to the townspeople to look at it. I'd just say that when we put forward at the town meeting, we have a very clear explanation of what you had here, exactly what money we have. Like Jim said, we're not damaging our bond rating or anything else. And we just need to, we need to move on it and get the public opinion. and we just need to, we need to move on it and get the public opinion.
Anyone? Is everyone in agreement, or?
Yeah.
Okay. Sean, is Sean able to talk?
Can you hear me, Ryan?
I can, yes.
Okay.
Do you want to say something?
No, I just wanted to say, you asked if you could hear me, and I said...
Fair enough. Okay. Uh, so with that, then, we'll, I, I will move forward with this. I will get, I will complete this resolution and fine-tune it and have it ready for a special Board of Selectmen meeting. Most likely, it'll be next Wednesday. It'll be a brief meeting with only this on the agenda, just as, and we're not going to be taking any action at that meeting. We will only be most likely setting a public hearing date and a special town meeting date, which will be, uh, to be determined, but it, the latest possible date it would be would be January 24th, which is a Wednesday. So stay tuned on, on that. So, uh, so we'll move, we'll move forward with our meeting tonight, and I'll move forward with this, and we'll get back to you on a, does that work for everyone, though, special town, or special Board of Selectmen meeting, most likely Wednesday, uh, January 10th at, we'll say 7:00 PM?
That works.
Okay.
Yeah, that should work.
Okay. Thank you all. All right. So with that, we will move on to item eight on tonight's agenda, and this is a discussion and possible action on fixed assessment application for TCBS Properties LLC, 1600 Portland Cobalt Road. And we have our tax assessor, Rich Lasky, with us this evening. Hi, Rich.
Hi.
And I don't know, Rich, if you want to come up now. Rich, so, so this is our policy on fixing real assessment properties. We do have this policy. I think it went into effect in December of 2012, and it was modified since then, but it's a policy where for, for residential and business owners who make substantial improvements to their, to their place of business or residence over certain dollar thresholds, this, they can apply to fix the, the assessment on the improvement in that, in that building's value up to certain thresholds and for certain time periods of time, as spelled out in our policy that was approved by this board. And so we did, these haven't come up terribly often, but we did have one come up recently, and this is at 1600 Portland Cobalt Road. This is with Tom Clausy. And Tom had applied, and he had submitted a fixed assessment application. The application came to my office and Rich's office, and it looks like, as I have Rich's, and it's in your packet, Rich's full report here, and it kind of outlines the improvements that have been made to the property and to the building, and then what he would be entitled to based on this policy. You'll see that on the second page. So let's see. It looks as though, so the total cost of improvements is $192,000 per the building department records, and because of the policy, our current policy states that if the cost of the improvements is not less than $25,000 and up to $499,999, then the assessment or increase in assessment may be fixed at 50% of the increased assessment for a period not greater than three years. So that is what JCBs Properties LLC applied for. They applied for that increase, which is estimated to be $101,430. Is that correct? That was the, the increase, that's 50% of the increase, Rich?
Uh, yeah, the, um, talking about, you know, the, the assessment value there. It looks like when, when I went out to the building back in October, so when I was doing my rounds, new construction, um, I, I put a value on the building about, let's see, uh, let's see, 289,800, you know, for it's a five bay, yeah, there's five bays. It's just like commercial, um, kind of rentable, leasable units, you know, as far as for contractors, kind of a building kind of thing. So it's basic frame building, you know, with units, and it's leasable type of thing, and so if they have, you know, people that are leasing, or, you know, other businesses coming in, it was like, it could kind of qualify for this between the way this program is, um, by the way, this policy is set up. Um, yeah, so assessment-wise, about 202, 860 comes off with the building value, 50% of that is 101, 430, and just simple math, take that 101 times our mill rate, I just used last year's mill rate to estimate it, so, um, you know, I was looking about savings at about, probably about $3,000 a year, so.
I have estimated $3,380.
Yeah.
Per year.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, you know, the, the, gives, gives them a little tax break on that, we'll say, on the property. Um, the property is also reassessed, too, because of the zoning change that was went into effect a couple of years ago, we'll say, and then, um, so like I said, the land value did go up, but this policy is geared towards building value, you know, so we're going to bait, bait some tax off the building, we'll say, upon approval. So I guess through the course of the three years for the item number C there that, that he's looking under, uh, total savings about $10,000, $10,000 over the course of about three years.
I was, actually was on the board back in 2012 when we adopted this, this fixed assessment policy for the first time, and I remember the purpose of adopting this policy was to encourage the economic development in the town of Portland. And so we, at the time, we spent a lot of time looking at other neighboring towns and their fixed assessment policies to, to come up with our own, and in the hopes that this would spur further economic development and growth in the town. And I think that it has. As Elwyn alluded to in the, in the public comments, we use this fixed assessment policy to, successfully, to get the Brainer Place project up and running and, and moving forward. And although we're, we continue in those negotiations, I, I do believe that that project would not be moving forward to where it is now if we had not done so. So this is a tool in our toolbox that we use to incentivize businesses to make those improvements and, and to grow their businesses in the town. So it's, it's something that, that I know we've talked, it's on our agenda later tonight to, to maybe further update and modernize our current policy, but it is something, I think, that is beneficial to the town and to our residents as a whole.
Since the adoption in 2012, has there ever been an applicant that has been declined for, declined for this fixed assessment?
Not, not since I've been here.
I don't think, I can't remember.
I just don't know if there was precedent for a reason why. I mean, it seems like it's economic growth, it seems like a good thing, it might spawn other businesses to grow around it. I like the idea of it, I just want to know if there was ever a reason why it would have been declined. It's up to us to decide whether it's valued or not, right?
The only, I mean, I can remember a couple of times, I think, there were board members at the time that just recused themselves because they may have been, or their family was involved in the business or something, but...
Right.
I don't recall the time, and I was off the board for six years, so I, I may, you know, be missing one, but I don't think that there was a time, at least not that I can recall, where we denied one.
Hey, so the policy, the policy's pretty, you know, spelled out saying, you know, to increase, you know, new business in town, we'll say, so if it's, uh, you know, they're following the, the protocol on that, we'll say, you know. Now, when I went out to, um, I talked to, uh, Ben Serb when I was out there on the site that day, and I asked him, I said, are you going to have any, um, you know, are these going to be leasable units? Are you going to bring, we'll say, um, other contractors in the lease, be spays out or whatever, and he said, I think he said about three right now he's looking at, so at least about three units, something to think about, too.
Well, as I said, it was this building that went before planning and zoning that they have four of the five bays being leased out to one company.
Okay.
It was a specialty automobile company, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, so that, that's something where, you know, you didn't, they didn't get to, that, that's, that's one thing as far as if we're going to talk about any modification to it. I probably wouldn't want to say, do you have any potential, you know, business coming into this spot or whatever it is? That should probably should be something that should answer, too, on that, because I did ask him, I said, you know, are there going to be leasable units for new businesses in town? And I, you know, so I was understanding about three right now, what he told me, so you guys might have more information than I do because I was not at that other meeting, so.
So just to be clear, you do believe that all the conditions are met?
Um, as far as what I'm seeing, uh, you know, so far, yes. You know, I, I don't see anything that, that, that was not approved, we'll say, that, you know, in, in the past, but like I said, it's up to you guys as far as making that decision goes. And if there's any questions or whatever, we got to get back to them. It'd probably be a good time to discuss that, too, as well, you know.
Are they close to renting those bays out yet?
I was out there, uh, probably sometime first or second week in October, and it was, you know, the building was almost on completion. I think they just put the paving in, so, I mean, probably anytime after that, um, since I've been there. You know, so I'm not sure whether that was, but right now, I just kind of put the, I just want to get a value on the building, then obviously the application came in, so.
Yeah. So and this is for one of the buildings, correct?
Um, yeah, there's only one building there right now.
So, and just so the board's aware, I believe an application came in for, I think it's approved for two buildings on that site, and an application did come in for two additional buildings. So I wouldn't be surprised if, you know, another, another application came in for, for those additional buildings after they, after they go up. But, which is good, we, we like, we like development, and so we're grateful for, for new business, new business opportunities in the town. But I just wanted everyone to be aware that there will most likely be four of these buildings on this, on this property.
The only other question I have is that the, the policy we have says you can increase, you can fix it at 50% of the assessed for a period of not greater than three years. Has there ever been a, one of these that's been approved for a less than three-year period?
I, I've, I've never heard of that, no. I think it, it does kind of give you that wiggle room where, if, you know, you guys can make your own, you know, amendments, too, we'll say, that way it's written like that. I think that's come right out of the state statute, too.
Yeah.
Really, no doubt. Very optional, we'll say, what you can do with it, but kind of gives you limitations, too, on it, which is good, you know.
Would someone like to introduce the resolution and continue, we can continue the discussion?
Yeah, I'll introduce the resolution.
Thank you, Jim. Do you want to, we'll read it if you don't mind my listening to the record.
All right. Resolution Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland, Connecticut, January 3rd, 2024. Resolution authorizing the fixing of real property assessments, whereas the town has an existing policy to encourage the growth and expansion of commercial and industrial parcels by allowing for the fixing of real property assessments where a proposed development meets the requirements of CGS Section 12-65B, and whereas Tom Clausy, DBA 1600 Portland Cobalt Road LLC, has built new construction, 5,400 square feet, commercial industrial storage and mixed-use office at 1600 Portland Cobalt Road, map 16 lot 31-1, the property and existing business, and whereas it is in the town's best interest and is consistent with its economic development policies and its policies on fixing real estate property assessments policy, in particular to encourage this proposed development, and whereas Tom Clausy, the owner of the property, submitted a fixed assessment application to the town dated December 12th, 2023, to fix its real property assessment for the proposed development of the property in accordance with G, CGS Section 12-65B and the town's policy, the application. And whereas town staff has reviewed the application and confirmed that it appears to meet the eligibility, eligibility requirements for a fixed tax assessment as set forth in the general statutes and the town policy. Now therefore be it resolved, after due consideration and review, the Town of Portland hereby approves the application and authorizes the first selectman to execute a tax assessment, fixing agreement for the purpose of fixing the real property tax assessment on the property in accordance with the terms and conditions set forth in CGS 12-65B and the town policy.
Jim, you still a second on it?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so we'll continue on the discussion, further discussion on this?
I just have one question. On the application, it says owner's name is TCBS Properties LLC, and then here, whereas Tom Clausy, the owner of the property, has submitted.
Yeah, they...
So is it the LLC or is it Tom Clausy?
He, he was, um, he's, he's a member there that came in, that had the application, it's definitely his name on there, but the, um...
I mean, for official purposes, does it have to be TCBS?
You know what?
Or does it have to be Tom Clausy?
It probably should be, you know, type of thing, because I, I know, I know they changed the, um, I think the, uh, property changed to 1600 Portland Cobalt Road LLC after, well, actually, I'm not sure after or not, but I think the, I'll take a look when that transfer was. But, um, yeah, TCBS Properties are the same, same principal law members as, I think, 1600, you know, Portland Cobalt Road. It's something where if the application, you probably, could probably be better spell it out on that or bring it back to them, say, update that part of it, at least, you know.
So just to be clear, when, when the applicant applied for the fixed assessment, they were known, the owner's name, they wrote JCBs Properties LLC, but that has since been changed to 1600 Portland Cobalt Road LLC, but it is the same member, same principal number?
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's the same principal members. I think they, they just changed the, um, LLC name to the property, or they took out the LLC to put it in that.
Can we silence phones for those who, who have not done so, please?
I don't, I don't have a, unfortunately, my field card here doesn't have the, you know, doesn't... Actually, it looks like, it looks like this property was under the 1600 Portland Cobalt Road LLC, um, name since 2017, so that, that was when they purchased this property. Um, probably the application probably should say, you know, for the owner's name, 1600 Portland Cobalt Road LLC, you know.
Okay. So the resolution is correct?
Um, yeah, it's, it's correct if it says 1600 Portland Cobalt LLC for property owner on that. So you probably, probably should amend the, uh, the, the application, if anything.
Any other discussion on this? Comments? Are we ready to call for the question?
Sure.
Yeah. Let's do it. All right. All those in favor of the resolution authorizing the fixing of real property assessments?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstention? All right. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all, and thank you, Rich, for coming tonight. Rich, if, if we may be talking about the fixed assessment, do you mind second around for just a couple of minutes?
Yeah, fine.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item nine on tonight's agenda, which is the appointments to boards and commissions. Are there any appointments?
Um, we have one that we missed in our last meeting, uh, for the Emergency Management Board, to have Scott Cunningham replace Ron Malardo.
Is there a, is there a second on that?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All right. Any discussion? Just met with Captain Cunningham today, he's doing a great job. We're busy, so, so thank, thank you, Bobby. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
The other item we had that we tabled last meeting was Veteran Affairs, nomination for Robert Hunter, and I know you took that back to do a little investigation. Are, are we in line or comfortable with making that?
I think so, yeah. So just, I'll tell you, I did reach out to the Chair of our Ethics Commission just for informal opinion on this, and that's Chairman Jim Boats, and, and so Jim got back to me pretty quickly on it, and, and there's nothing in the ethics ordinance that says you cannot do so, and really, it's, it's up to the board's pleasure is whether or not they, they, you know, make that appointment. So, so after, after receiving the response from, from Jim, I don't have any reservations about the appointment, so, you know.
So, so I, I made the motion last meeting, and I think Jim Tripp seconded it. I'll make the motion again that we nominate Robert Hunter for Veterans Affairs as an alternate.
I'll second that again.
Great. Any, any discussion? Great, any, any discussion?
Well, just thank you for doing the research and clarifying the, uh, the question that was posed.
Thank you, thank you, Jim. And, and thank you to Robert Hunter for volunteering to serve in this capacity as well. We, we do appreciate all of our volunteers and sometimes it just, sometimes we just wanna make sure that we, we do everything the appropriate way. And sometimes that just takes a little bit more time. So thank you all for your patience. So with that, call for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. I think that's it for appointments?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, we do have one, moving on to item 10, refunds of excess payments. We have one.
Uh, make a motion for the refund of excess payments for Honda Lease Trust for $110.69.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Great. Uh, next up is item 11 on the agenda, which is status reports, status and committee reports. I'll, I don't have too many updates today. The, the big one I touched on earlier is to talk about our presentation from Great Blue Research on the school facilities, uh, report and the survey that we've done. Now that survey concluded, it wrapped up at the end of the 2023 calendar year. So the survey is closed. I wanna thank everyone who had participated in that survey. We had approximately 975 residents that filled out that survey. So right now, Great Blue is compiling all of that data, they're, they're reviewing everything. And I know, I've, I've seen some questions on social media on, on how, you know, we can be sure that, that everyone only filled out the survey once and that they're Portland residents and that they're voters. And I can assure you that the Great Blue Research has, has tools in place to kinda weed out and filter out any, any of those, uh, you know, maybe miscellaneous, uh, survey inputs. And so that, you know, that'll be explained at our upcoming meeting. But I did schedule that with the Board of Education for Wednesday, January 17th, 2024, at 6:30 PM. So what we'll do is we'll have a presentation, a special joint meeting with the Board of Education. And this is just prior to our regular meeting, which will be at seven o'clock, but may start later if that special meeting goes over. So I just, is everyone okay with that before we, we put it out? Absolutely.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Great. No, I'm really excited. I know they're, they're working on putting the data together. I have not seen anything yet, they have not shared anything with me, so I'm eagerly awaiting the results, just as much as everyone else, so. I, I, but I think it's good. I think 975 residents, uh, speaks to us doing a good job to get the word out. I wish, I wish it was, you know, 6,760 voters that we have in the town of Portland. But every registered voter did receive a postcard and had, uh, quite a bit of time to fill out that survey and, and make their voice heard. So I, I hope that, uh, those here, I'm sure took the opportunity to do so and I'm looking forward to the results. So more to come on that.
Ryan, quick question before we move off that. Um, just from a logistics standpoint, um, I know one of the things I think that came up in the last meeting was where that would be, where that presentation would be done?
Mm-hmm.
In case we had a larger public turnout.
Yep.
Um, are we just gonna be meeting at our regular location in two weeks?
Currently we are, Jim. Uh, and this, we could change it. I, right now, I, I think that we do have the capacity here, but we're also going to make sure that, that folks are aware that our meetings are, are recorded. Not only can you attend in person, you can attend virtually, you can attend, you can stream it on YouTube as well. So I, I think that we'll have the capacity here. But if, if I, and what we've happened at other meetings is if, if it does appear that we need more space, we, we will move. But right now, I did talk with Dr. Britton about that and he seemed to think that he was in agreement that we could, we could continue to use the Buck Foreman Room. But that's a good question. So I, I think if we have to move it, we will. But certainly I'd encourage, anybody who misses the meeting can, can watch that on, on YouTube as well. You can go back and watch our, our meeting. So if, if anyone has trouble falling asleep at night, you can watch us, uh, and, uh, do so. But, um, but yeah, so the good question, Jim, thank you. Does anyone else have any, anything on that?
You, you wanna update on meetings we attended or?
Yeah, I got one more update. It just, I did post about it, just so everyone knows, the Christmas tree pickup is starting with the Public Works Department on Monday, January 8th, running through Friday, January 19th. And those residents who have passes can also bring their Christmas trees to the, uh, transfer station as well, you know, during that time at no charge. So just wanna let people know, get your, get your trees out, they're coming for them. And that's all I got.
I went to Board of Ed meeting last night?
Yep.
Their meetings are, are amazing, they pack so much into those agendas. Couple of things that came out of it, we had a very good presentation. They do something on their agenda called Portland Publical Spotlight. Uh, and last night, they had a presentation about the, um, Portland Pathways Transition Academy. Director of Student Services, Dawn Davis, and Teacher Ted Pinto spoke about a new program that we have. There are, you know, a fair number of graduates of Portland schools with developmental and other needs. And this is really an opportunity to, to help them, you know, learn some life skills and get some volunteer vocational assistance. Um, it, it was a very, it's just an amazing program. And they actually spoke about our, Mr. Pelton here. They're working with him to try to develop another opportunity through him for work-study kind of a program for these folks. They, the, the issue they brought to light is that they're currently, they do a lot with the kitchens. They do an awful lot of kitchen work and they're currently, as I understand it at this, using the kitchen there. Uh, but they can only be there for a year, according to the program. They have to move on. And somebody asked a question, why? And it's, I guess because you have older young adults in a school with younger kids. And that's, you know, not acceptable. So they're looking for another facility that would be handicapped accessible and, and give them the flexibility to do, continue to do the program that they're doing. They're, I guess they had been at the high school cafeteria and there was talk about, you know, why don't you go back to the high school cafeteria? And basically they said, you know, these, these young adults have graduated from the high school and you really don't want them to feel like they're going back. But it was just an amazing presentation, uh, and it's, uh, it sounds like something, um, something, another thing that, hidden gem that we have in this town. Just a couple of other quick things. Uh, they talked a little bit about the, the new state statute, uh, on the age of attendance, where a 23, 24 school year, uh, a child has to be, uh, five by January 1st of '24. But starting in the next school year, 24, 25, they must turn five on or before September 1st of the school year. So, you know, they're, they're, it's, it's gonna be difficult, uh, I think for some families, young families, that their child may now not qualify for school because they're in that three, four month range area. So there's, they're talking about how they can best help out with that. They also talked about, um, reviewing their building usage, request forms, and potentially updating their fee structure for rental of, um, auditorium and things like that. Not for, uh, in, for residents and for student programs, but for folks that wanna rent that, that come in from outside. Uh, the last time those were updated was 2017 and they feel it's now time to do that again. Uh, and really the only other thing, they, they moved into executive session at the end, so I stepped out. But they also set their graduation date for June 13th. That's what I got.
Well, do you know what day of the week that is?
Thursday.
Thursday? Thank you, John. Does anyone have any other status? I think they did, just so you, uh, they're starting their budget process as well.
They, they provided everybody last night with, uh, with a copy of the budget and they'll start their review for discussion at the next meeting.
So foreshadowing of things to come for this board.
Yep.
Yes. Alright, so we'll move on from status reports to item 12, which is public comment. Is there anyone in the audience? Bill, would you like to come up? We, we'd go with the audience first. Come on up, Bill, just state, state your name and, and address, please.
Bill Walensky, 19 Rogers Road. Uh, I'm the, uh, the Chairman of the Veterans Affairs. I'd like to thank the full board for approving Bob to our, uh, board, especially, uh, John Dillon and Jim Tripp. Thank you, Jim.
Welcome, sir.
This, this board was formed in 2005, I think, by, by Sue Bransfield. And of the original five, uh, there's still three of us. Uh, Mr. Cody, uh, Miss, oh, Jesus. I'll call you back when we turn this damn thing off. Mr. Cody, um, Dick Cody, uh, Jack. Oh, I can't even think of his last name now, eh?
Sterry?
Sterry, of course. Reg Farrington, uh, and myself. From 2005 up to now, I can count on one hand of how many people, veterans, have come forward to volunteer. So when somebody does, uh, come forward, uh, you know, we wanna expedite it and get them, get them on board. It doesn't necessarily have to be a veteran. If, it could be a member of the, uh, you know, the community. You know, we, we, we'll, we'll talk to anybody, you know, who's interested. So, uh, yeah, that, that, that's all, but, uh, when Sue won this, this committee, uh, uh, nobody was vetted. There was no, uh, politics involved, you know? And, uh, and this last incident with, uh, Bob, uh, I was a little upset about it. You know, Bob's a veteran and, uh, uh, I'm glad we got it resolved anyway. But, uh, uh, in the future, I hope there's no more, uh, question about anybody who wants to come and, and volunteer, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Further, there was never a question on, on the individual, it was just the relation to another city member on the board. So just to clarify, there was no politics, just, we wanted to verify that we weren't, you know, overstepping any, any bounds, that's all. Any other additional public comment in the audience? One, okay?
Hi, I just had a quick comment, can you hear me?
Yes. It is.
Um, it was actually just in regards to the Honda Lease Trust situation. Nothing was really discussed and I don't know if I missed a previous meeting where it was. But what does that kind of entail, I guess, to the resource that, anything at all or?
Right, you have a name and address?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry. Tracy, is it? Could you state your name and address for us to?
Sorry, it, yes, it's Tracy and I'm at 15 Spring Street.
Okay, your last name Stacy? Or Tracy, sorry?
Tracy, it's Franchione.
Okay, thank you. Cause we have to put that in the minutes of the meeting, thank you.
Oh, sure.
So I, I'll just answer, so every, every meeting typically, we all, we routinely have refunds of excess payments and, and the payments are refunded for a variety of reasons. It may be, it may be an overpayment, uh, there, there may be, there's always a reason and the reason has been vetted by our, our tax collector as well as our finance director before it comes to this board. So there's always a, a paper trail and a backup that correspond to these refunds of excess payments. So I don't have the, the detail in front of me on this specific payment, but I, but I do know that our tax collector, Cindy Gatto, would have that available if you would like to call her tomorrow. You can reach her, her, the phone number is 860-342-6726. And I, I, she would be able to explain exactly what this particular Honda Lease Trust refund was. But this is, this is a routine refund of excess payments that, that we, that this board has to authorize per our charter. So we, we do have to do this, it's more of a formality. Although, although there was an overpayment and we do have to return the funds, the town, at Town Hall, they don't have the mechanism to, to return those funds without this board's authorization and approval. So, so essentially, we are the final say that, that authorizes that refund. But, but the decision has already been made by and reviewed by our tax collector and our finance director before it ever even comes to this board. So I hope, I hope that answers your question. So.
Okay, and then I should reach out to Cindy?
Oh, I gave her, I, oh, I'm sorry, I gave you the wrong number. I gave you our finance director's number, so please don't call that. Please, it's, uh, 342-6737, I believe, right? Okay, sorry, I'm just used to calling Tom, I guess, so.
And ask for Cynthia?
And ask for Cindy, please. Uh, Cindy is our tax collector and she'll be able to, uh, explain, you know, the rest of the process for you. But, uh, this, this will clear it up, at least on this board's end, and things will move forward now, so. Uh, good question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we'll move on to Board of Selectmen General Informal Discussion. Does anyone have anything this evening? Okay, so we'll move on then to item 14, which is our follow-up items. I did, I had heard from, uh, Selectmen Hetrick earlier, I believe you wanted to touch upon our review on the policy on fixing real property assessments?
Yes, I know before in the past, we've talked about doing a, uh, subcommittee to review this, uh, and I was hoping to get that started.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good idea that, we had talked about looking and, and as I alluded to earlier, we had talked about that, that fixed assessment policy that was approved and, and it's actually included in your packet. And you can see that it was originally drafted and approved in, uh, 2012 and then revised in 2016. So we have not, we have not adjusted this in, in almost eight years now. So I think this board had talked about previously, looking at that and maybe, you know, updating it to the times and making sure that it's current and it reflects, you know, we're, we're maximizing our incentives for businesses, uh, and, and making sure that we, we've updated this to, to current standards. So, uh, yeah, I think that's a good idea. Would you like to, you know, chair that, that subcommittee?
Sure.
Okay, is there other, others that would like to be on the subcommittee?
I'll join you.
I would.
Who, who is that?
Sean.
Sean?
Sean.
Okay. You would help, yeah, so Rich, Rich could attend, that's why, that's why I asked you to stay, so. We could volunteer you for this.
When I was working with Town Monroe, we, we went through our whole, um, ordinance as well. And, uh, we got some good, you know, ideas that are, I think, you know, for a possible for that program too, which I really made it like three miles as far as.
Do you wanna come up and say that? I'm sorry.
Yeah, when I was working for the Town Monroe years, years ago, we, um, went through our, uh, you know, Town Abatement Program too as well. And, uh, it was, originally it was very similar to the one that we're using right now, right, right out of the state statute. And there was just a couple like, uh, there was a subcommittee that, you know, kinda re-reviewed it beforehand, you know? Whether we just, uh, got a copy of it and kinda looked through and made adjustments or emailed where it was. It was very straightforward, you know? And, um, from there, then it would go, you know, in front of the Board of Selectmen for discussion. for discussion. Couple things that I, that I think is important for it, maybe we should probably, as far as even the budgeting, you know, maybe a timeline for them to get the applications in, or maybe make like a, maybe an October one assessment date, kind of, you know, have some kind of order, and that, that way we can budget for it too, you know, because like right now, as, as our, right now, as a stance, you know, technically, anybody can kind of get the application in, and we've got to act on it within the next couple of months, maybe, because they're going for a CO, whereas in that, you know, we can end up, you know, abating tax money that's, you know, in our budget type of thing. So those are the kind of things that I think are important to kind of like, you know, maybe have written out somehow within the ordinance itself, you know? Plus, I think our applications probably should have a little more detail as well.
Rich, that's awesome.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, if you guys want some feedback or some help, and want me to get my other research I did, you know, ten years ago, the town, I could probably figure that out, you know?
Great.
So.
So we have, we have a group. We have John, Bobby, and Sean, and then you, you can, you know, attend as a non-
Yeah, no, I don't want to have any final decision, but I'll let you guys know my experience with it, you know?
Absolutely.
Yeah, you know?
And then so the subcommittee would meet and then bring back their recommendations to the full board, and then this, this body can, can continue those conversations and, and, you know, do so what they, what they choose to with that, with those recommendations. So I, I think that's great. So, okay, so we'll, we'll do that. Do you have a date that you want to meet, or?
I was thinking if the town hall, the late day is Tuesday, that would be the easiest.
That would be perfect for me, yeah.
Rich, if you attend. So these, these are public meetings as well, so we would post agendas for them online. They would be special, special subcommittee meetings of the Board of Selectmen, and we can do that. So for those who are interested in maybe attending or reading those minutes, the minutes, and the agendas will be posted online and open to the public as well. So if you'd like to attend, feel free to do so, and if you'd like to follow along, please feel free to follow to those minutes, but no action would be taken until the subcommittee brings their recommendations to the full board.
So the subcommittee would need to retain somebody to do minutes for us, too?
Typically, typically, you know, I may attend as a non-part, you know, non-voting member as well, and maybe I would take the minutes, or typically, a member of the subcommittee would take the minutes. I guess I'm volunteering myself to do so, but if you-
Bobby, you got that, right?
Yep.
Maybe since Sean's not here, we can, we can volunteer. But-
Have you seen his hand right now?
So, so yeah, that's how that would work.
Okay.
Unless Sharon, unless you.
Do we want to talk about a date now, or?
Do you want to meet before the next meeting, or do you want to, it's up to the subcommittee, I guess.
I'd rather get it going.
I mean, you guys could meet as early as the ninth if you, if you wanted to, I suppose. I don't know.
Yeah. I'm, I'm, whatever you want to do, Bobby, I'll, I'll make the time. I got a long walk.
If, we'll say the ninth, and if the ninth doesn't work, we can do it the sixteenth.
Okay. Do you want to tentatively put in Tuesday, January ninth, at five PM then? Would that work for everyone?
That works for me.
Or is that too early or late?
Works for me.
That'll work.
Okay, so the first meeting of the subcommittee will be Tuesday, January ninth, at five PM. Does that work for you, Rich?
Yeah.
You'll be there at town hall anyway.
You know, you know where to find me. I'm, I'm a dud.
All right, thank, thank you, Rich. Thank you, Bobby. So, all right, great. More to come on that then. I don't have anything on the other two items, so with that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion adjourned.
I'll second.
Thank you both. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Have a great night, everyone. Thank you.
Dave's last meeting, isn't it?
No, it's not.
Oh, it's not, huh?
I would have said something.